of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt will take your vote call.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Doris.
Present.
Vice Chair Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner Kine and Commissioner Mobley let me know that they would not be here, so Chairman Saitz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you will look at the minutes from May 9, 2023, we will entertain your review as well as a motion to either adopt or amend.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 9, 2023 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor of approval of the minutes from May 9, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Minutes are approved. At this time, we will receive oral comments from the public. Members of the public can be heard on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And of course, by law, this planning commission is not able to deliberate or take action on any issues presented during oral comments. We have no one in person. We will seek anyone online via Zoom.
We do not have any public in attendance on Zoom.
Okay, is there a motion to close oral comment?
Close oral comment.
All right, we close oral comment at this time. We now move to the business of tonight's meeting, which is a public hearing to consider a recommendation to the Fortuna City Council regarding the adoption of multifamily design standards. And I will politely hand it over to city staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to introduce our consultants on the project, and they'll be going over what we've done so far for our multifamily design standards. So we have Vanessa Blodgett with Plan West, and we have Ben Noble, who's online. And so Vanessa is going to provide a little bit of an introduction. And then they'll, either Vanessa or Ben will be reviewing a little bit of the background, what we've done so far. You will see that there was some stakeholder meetings and a previous planning commission meeting. And so what some of the work that has gone into these efforts. And then they'll be presenting those to you. So with that, I'll hand it over to Vanessa.
Great, thanks, Merritt. Thanks for having us here this evening. Good to see you all, and we appreciate the time. So I am just going to do a quick introduction and then hand it over to Ben to get into the details. But as Merritt said, I'm Vanessa Blodgett, principal with Plan West Partners. We're based locally in Arcata, and Ben Noble is our sub and here with me tonight on Zoom. And we have been working with the city over the past couple of years on a variety of different housing-related, looking at the zoning ordinance and standards and to encourage and facilitate housing. Overall, locally, regionally, and at the state level, there is a planning emphasis on identifying housing needs for all community members and how the city can provide conditions that are conducive to provide, to make housing, to developers, to develop housing. And so these standards are, you know, an opportunity for property owners and developers to have an option that would save them time and allow for city staff to have a streamlined approval process for the developments and also, you know, have very clear standards that everyone is aware of and understands from the get-go. And, you know, there is a need to balance standards and this requirements and the needs, the city's needs, and also the financial feasibility of development. So it is a balance of those things. And for a little bit of background, the city received some funding, grant funding, that has been helping with this effort from the California State Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is just one, one piece of the task that we are working on with the city and have been working on. The city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance was prepared and adopted in 2021 as part of this effort. And then we have, since then, have been working on and off with city staff and the consultant team to develop the proposed standards that are part of your packet. And also, what was included in your packet was a little bit of background or one of the study sessions that we had early on in the project, too, to give you that context. And I think with that, I'm happy to answer any questions now, or, and then I was going to turn it over to Ben.
Any questions so far from commissioners?
No questions here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, I will hand it over to you.
All right, thanks, Vanessa. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. And I'm going to share my screen with the presentation. And come on, there we go. And so is my slide visible? I should say, presentation overview on top?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so again, my name is Ben Noble. I'm part of the consultant team with Plan West Partners. And I'm based in the San Francisco Bay Area, so unable to join you in person tonight, but very happy to be able to participate via Zoom. Recently, I've been doing a lot of work up in Humboldt County, including work for Arcata and Eureka, as well as Fortuna. So I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you about the design standards for multifamily housing. So I'm going to give a little bit more background information about the project purpose and its origins, the work that we've completed, highlight some relevant state law. And then I'll walk through the proposed standards, which are grouped into two main categories. There are standards for all areas where multifamily housing is allowed. And then there are some supplemental standards that apply to some specific defined character areas. So, let's see. So as Vanessa and Merritt mentioned, the purpose of these standards is to facilitate housing production. It's also to ensure quality development with a streamlined approval process, to reduce applicant costs and time, to increase the certainty and predictability of the project approval process, to clearly communicate these requirements, and to also allow for flexibility and creativity. So these have been our guiding principles that have helped shape the work that's before you tonight. And so this was last before the Planning Commission in 2020, where we presented a recommended approach. A memo that describes that approach is attached in the staff report packet, since some of you were not on the Planning Commission at that time. We also had a number of stakeholder meetings of local builders and property owners and designers to get some feedback back in 2020, as well as a city council and planning commission's special study session at the end of 2020. Due to conflicting priorities and other requirements on staff and time, we're unable to bring it back to the Planning Commission until tonight. And so as I mentioned, we did take this into a group of local stakeholders. And some of the themes of the feedback that we heard are up on the screen here. We heard some comments about concerns about standards increasing development costs and reducing housing affordability, comments about the importance of flexibility, wanting to vary standards for different location, and wanting design requirements not to be overly burdensome. So we tried to take these comments and concerns and address them in the work product before you tonight. Another important consideration is state law that's relevant to these standards, as well as to housing policies and requirements that go beyond just these standards. So there have been some common themes in recent legislation. And one of those themes has to do with objective standards. So any new design standard that a city adopts must be objective, meaning it must be based on quantifiable or measurable criteria, and it must be knowable to a applicant and to the city in advance of the application. Another requirement is that cities can't deny or reduce the proposed density of a multi-unit project that conforms with these standards without making special findings. And those findings are difficult to make, and it's essentially that the project would result in a specific adverse public health and safety impact. Another requirement related to objective standards is that cities cannot use subjective requirements to deny multi-unit projects. So if, for example, a general plan, policy, or a design review criteria contains a subjective requirement, cities can't use that to deny a multi-unit project. So another common theme in recent state law related to multi-unit housing is by right approvals. So several years ago, the state adopted SB 35, Senate Bill 35. And what that says is that for certain types of multifamily projects that include a percentage of affordable units, cities must approve those projects through a streamlined ministerial approval and must approve the project if it is consistent with all objective standards. There was another similar law that went into effect last year. And what that law says is that a applicant can propose multifamily housing on commercially zoned land, and as long as that project is consistent with objective standards and meets other eligibility criteria, the city must approve it through a streamlined ministerial process. So each year, the legislature adopts new laws related to housing production that have a similar theme to what was recently adopted. And here are two laws that haven't been adopted yet. They're currently being considered in this year's legislative session. And we'll see if they get adopted or not, they may or may not. I highlight them just because what we expect to see in the future is more legislation that relies on, or requires cities to rely on objective standards and identifies additional projects that need to be approved through a ministerial by right process if the project is consistent with objective standards. So for example, AB 68 would require streamlined ministerial approval for projects that are either on a climate smart parcel, and you can't really see my air quotes via Zoom, but what that means is, you know, parcels that meet certain location criteria in terms of proximity to transit and daily needs and things like that, or is identified as a priority development area within a region's sustainable community strategy. So another pending law is SB 684, which would require cities to approve through a streamlined ministerial process projects with 10 or few single-family units, each less than 17, 50 square feet on urban lots of a certain size and that are substantially surrounded by certain urban uses. And this is envisioning on relatively small lots, say clustered, single-family homes that meet certain eligibility requirements would be subject to a streamlined ministerial approval process if those projects are consistent with objective standards. So I'm using this term, "objective standards." It's a term of art that's defined in state law. And these are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criteria, and that they are available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submittal. So this is the official definition of objective standards. And state law actually requires all new design standards related to multi-unit housing to be objective. It's now against the law to, for cities to adopt subjective design standards for multi-unit housing. So here's an example of a subjective requirement. And this is from Fortuna's general plan. And it's a very sensible design requirement. It says, "All exterior elevations visible from major roadways should have an architectural treatment to alleviate long void surfaces." And then it goes on to provide some examples for how that could be accomplished. So this is an example of a subjective requirement that's existing. And under state law currently, if a project were before the city and the planning commission were to say, you know, "I feel like this project has long void surfaces and is not sufficiently broken up into smaller segments, and therefore wish to deny the project or require changes to it," under existing state law, the city would not be able to do that. The city could certainly ask an applicant to make some changes, and the applicant could voluntarily comply with that request. But at the end of the day, the city would not be able to deny the project due to a finding of in compliance with that requirement. And so as a contrast, here is an objective standard example. It's actually a standard from the proposed objective standards or design standards that are before you tonight. And what this says is that the area of a blank wall fronting a public street may not exceed a square area where the height and width are both 10 feet. And the standard goes on to, to provide sort of clarity as to what constitutes a break in a blank building wall. And the objective here is to take the existing subjective requirement, which is a good requirement, and translate that into a new objective standard that meets the state's definition of objective standard. So that's a little bit of background information about the legal landscape and state law and where the state is headed, and expect it to head with future, with, with future legislation. And I'll transition now to our draft multifamily design standards, which are before you tonight. And as I mentioned previously, in addition to an introduction, there are two main categories of standards. We have standards that apply to all areas where multi-unit housing is allowed in Fortuna. And then we have some supplemental standards that apply just to some defined geographic areas.
Hey, Ben, can I interrupt you for one second? This is Merritt.
Sure.
Yeah. One thing I want to say, and Ben, you might have another comment about this, is one of the things Liz would do, and she's worked with applicants using those general plan policies, which were subjective, and really get to a point where they had an agreement about what staff's recommendation would be based on those general plan policies. Again, so they weren't objective, but like on some of the Adams mixed use or others, Liz, Gary, others would work with them to make it visually interesting, to comply with that general plan policy, which is objective. And so it took a lot of work to kind of interpret that and go through each project before it came to the Planning Commission. But as a result, we had some really nice-looking projects that have happened. And so, you know, now that we can't use those subjective standards, we can't kind of withhold staff's recommendation for a project. You know, really, that's one of the things that we're seeking to have a little more set in stone, and that was one of the drivers for this, these design standards. Thanks, Ben.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so the standards for all areas, they are organized into six topics: circulation and streetscape, parking and vehicle access, building placement, orientation, and entries, building massing and open space, facade and roof design, and other site features. And on the right of this slide is the city's zoning map. And these standards would apply in all areas where multifamily is allowed. That's in the RM district, which is the darker brown on this map, as well as some of the commercial districts along the city's corridors. And so for the standards that apply in area, there's two types of standards. They're what we call the baseline standards. And these are things that are mandatory for all projects. And then there are the credit standards, where a project needs to comply with four of eight available credit standards. And each project can choose which standard to use to meet the credit standard requirement. And this is in the standards, in part, to respond to stakeholder comments about wanting to maximize flexibility and creativity and to allow projects to incorporate the design features that work best for the unique circumstances. So as discussed in the staff report, there are a couple of noteworthy standards that I just want to talk through for a few minutes relating to sidewalks, parking placement, entries, and roof forms. So there's a new standard in the document related to width of sidewalks. And what that says is that public sidewalks abutting a development parcel should have a minimum sidewalk width, curbed back of walk of six feet. And this is an important standard to include, in our opinion, for projects that might be approved through a ministerial process to make sure that there's something objective, to make sure that the sidewalk adjacent to the development parcel is of sufficient width. So another standard of note includes parking placement. And so what this standard says is that parking spaces may not be located in a required front or street side yard or between a primary building and a front or street side lot line. So you can see in this graphic, if you're able to see my mouse, in the area between the building and the street property lines, parking would not be allowed there or in the setback. It would need to be located behind the buildings outside of the setbacks. There are some, the standards do allow for some exceptions to this. So outside of the single-family neighborhood and town center character areas, an exception is allowed for senior housing projects and projects that are on sites of one acre or more on an arterial or collector's street. We recognize that for certain types of projects, this requirement may not be ideal. So we do bake in some flexibility in those cases. So here's a photograph of a recently constructed triplex, where instead of parking being located between the building and the street, it's accessed from the side of the front unit and located on the interior of the parcel. So this is a three-unit project in Santa Cruz, in Santa Cruz. Okay, so another standard of note that I wanted to highlight has to do with building entries. And so part of the standard relates to buildings that have one primary entrance, say, an apartment building with a lobby. And in that case, the primary building entrance must face the street. But like with the parking, we do have an exception. So outside of the single-family neighborhood and town center character areas, there's an exception to this requirement for projects on a site of one acre or more with multiple buildings sharing a common open space interior courtyard and on an arterial or collector's street. And in this, and, and, in these cases, the project would also have to comply with some additional design standards to activate the project frontage. And also, we have projects that might have units with individual exterior entrances. It could be townhomes, for example, or some similar type of project. And in this case, all ground floor units with street frontage must have an entrance that faces the street. But there are exceptions to this requirement, the same exceptions that apply to projects with just one primary entrance. And the photograph here is showing an example of a project that complies with the standards. So you can see there are the two end units that are facing the street. And the entrances to those units are oriented towards the street with a sidewalk connecting the main entrance, or a pathway connecting that main entrance from the, to the sidewalk. So this is an example of a project that's designed to comply with this particular standard. Okay, so the last standard that applies generally in all areas for all multifamily projects that I wanted to highlight is roof form variation. I think this came up as a topic of, of importance when we were first thinking about what are the most important elements of good design for multifamily projects in Fortuna? And breaking up a continuous roof line was seen as something that was important. And we provide for a couple of different ways that a project can comply with that, with this, really just to allow for the flexibility and individual projects to figure out what works best. The two photographs on the right are recent Fortuna projects. Both of these do a, a good job of breaking up the roof form and use different ways to do that, and is an example of two projects that would comply with this standard. Okay, now I'll speak for a couple of minutes about the supplemental standards for character areas. And when we were working on these standards, we identified two geographic areas where the character of the area is distinct enough from other multifamily areas in, in the city and that we need to identify some supplemental standards that would apply specifically to those areas. And there are two character areas. We call them, the first one primaries, primarily single-family neighborhood. And then the second one, we call town center. And so the primarily single-family neighborhood character area applies to areas that allow multifamily housing, but where the majority of existing homes are detached, single-family, or have a single-family character. And you can see on this map, it's the areas that have the green outline that are our single-family neighborhood character areas. So up here, up here, down here as well. And, and these are areas of town where multifamily housing is allowed, but the majority of existing buildings have a single-family character. And we want to make sure that new multifamily development sort of is compatible and consistent with that existing character. So we have some supplemental standards where we're aiming to locate new homes close to the front of the property line. We want to break larger buildings up into smaller volumes. And we want to ensure that the buildings have sort of more of a residential character that's consistent with the neighborhood currently. And so we have three standards. I won't go into them in more, in detail now. We can talk about them more later if you'd like. But we have a maximum setback standard, some massing break standards as well, and some required roof form standards that apply in these areas in addition to the standards that apply in all areas. And now we have our town center, special character area. And this applies for properties that are zoned retail, commercial in Fortuna's downtown Main Street area. And we have some supplemental standards in this area where we want to make sure that if a mixed-use residential project comes forward, that it's going to provide for an active and inviting ground floor frontages with vehicle access and parking that support a pedestrian-friendly environment with buildings that are located close to the sidewalk, with landscaping and amenities along the building frontages and for human-scale building design. And so if a project were to come forward through a ministerial process where the city isn't able to exercise discretionary design review, these standards would provide a certain level of protection that a new project would be proposed that would be in keeping with sort of the qualities of the downtown Main Street area that make that area unique and a special part of Fortuna. And so we have a number of standards that would apply in these areas related to storefront height, parking access, parking placement, maximum setback, use of the setback area. area, some objective standards related to base, building base, middle and cap, building components, as well as some standards related to the street-facing entries to the upper floors. Again, some sort of baseline, basic standards of good urban design for mixed-use residential buildings that could be applied within the town center area. Okay, so I have just a couple of final slides before I'll wrap things up. So as you know, currently, the planning commission conducts design review for new multifamily development. And you have design review criteria that you use that sort of relies on subjective requirements. And staff's recommendation as part of these design standards is to eliminate the design review process and to allow by right projects that comply with objective standards. So if a project comes forward and it is consistent with all of the objective standards in this document, as well as other objective standards in the zoning code or in the general plan, if there are any, or any other specific plan and subdivision ordinance, that, that project would be exempt from the design review process and could be approved through a by right approval. However, if an applicant wishes to deviate from one or more design standard within the design standards, there is a pathway to do that. Let's say, for example, an applicant just doesn't want to comply with a certain standard related to parking lot location, for whatever reason. That applicant could request a deviation and would be able to request planning commission approval with that deviation through the design review process. So there's that flexibility that is part of this if an applicant wishes to deviate from one or more of these standards. So this was something that was described back in 2020 as part of the study session and discussed with the stakeholder groups. This is an important part of the concept of these design standards. So we wanted to highlight that for the planning commission tonight. And we're requesting planning commission confirmation that this remains the desired approach. There is an alternative. An alternative is to continue requiring design review for all projects, including projects that comply with all of the design standards that would be in this document. And so if the planning commission continues to recommend a by right approval for projects that comply with the objective standards that would require an amendment to the zoning code, there are a number of other amendments that we need to make to the zoning code for other parts of the SB2 grant-funded projects that Vanessa described. And so we would come back to you at a future meeting with those zoning code text amendments. So to summarize my part of the presentation, we're recommending that you receive the staff report tonight, receive public comment, and consider the adoption of the draft resolution that's in the packet that would recommend that the city council adopt the multifamily design standards. We're also requesting confirmation on the by right approval for multi-unit projects that are consistent with the standards. And if that is part of your recommendation, we would return at a future meeting with draft text zoning code amendments that would be consistent with that recommendation. So with that, I will conclude my portion of the presentation and hand, hand it back to staff or Vanessa to see if there's anything that they wish to add before planning commission questions and public comment and deliberation.
Ben, could I, this is Merritt. Could I just make one kind of question that might help clarify it, right? So we have these objective design standards that if somebody comes in and they comply with the baseline ones, that they have a ministerial right and not a discretionary right. What if somebody comes in and says, you know what, I don't want to comply with, you know, three out of the five or any of them at all? And it went to the planning commission under design review. Would that, that, you know, would the planning commission have to, would we fall into that path of a subjective condition if it went to the planning commission and they would have by right the ability to build that? Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, yeah, that definitely makes sense. Would you like me to respond to that now or just sort of?
Well, I think just for clarification, because, right, we're putting together a bunch of objective design standards that really, you know, you know, the public could say, wow, these are a lot of really hard things. But if they like them, they could do them and it'll make the permitting process more streamlined. Or they could be viewed by an applicant another way, which would be, hey, these are, you know, these are more challenging. I don't really like them. I don't want to comply. I'll just go through design review and hopefully I don't have to do all these things, right? But then, you know, so I don't want to get too spun out, but it seems like if, if somebody has a path for design review, you know, would the planning commission's choices be limited? You know, would, you know, under the, the new legislation, would the planning commission be not able to apply the same type of policies that we've had in the past in the, you know, with those objective design standards? If they didn't want to comply with those, they went for design review, what would, would the planning commission's, you know, discretionary review be different? And how would they respond to those and not include subjective standards?
Right, yeah. You know, design review in California right now has become a very strange thing where, you know, planning commissions or design review boards through a discretionary design review process can ask for a lot of things. And usually, or in many cases, an applicant is willing to, you know, entertain changes or, you know, wants to maintain good relationship with the city and will, will, will want to make changes, you know, to please the city and get an approval and doesn't want to get into a fight with the city. But at the end of the day, cities' abilities to require changes to a project based on subjective requirements are very limited. You know, applicants, they don't want to get into a protracted lawsuit with a city. So they're going to be reluctant to go down this path. But let's say, for example, Fortuna maintains a discretionary design review process for all multi-unit projects. Or let's say, for example, an applicant requests deviation from four standards like, like Merritt, what you described. And the planning commission says, you know what, I really don't like what you're doing. I want you to, to make some other changes. The city's ability to, to require those changes are, are, are limited. And so I, I think I'm, I think I'm answering your, your question.
Yeah, I think it gets into a legal question, right? If the planning commission ultimately is applying subjective standards, we could end up in, in a type of legal jeopardy. And so what we're, we're trying to do with these objective design standards is define those things that are important and makes, make a project look better. And so I just wanted to make that point. It's, you know, it's one of the reasons why we're doing it. You know, we could end up in that situation. And I'd say as we're considering these design standards that are in the guidelines and in the resolution, you know, we're really counting on this commission to take a look at these, you know, kick the tires. Are these things that you, you want us to prepare and move forward with? Are they too much, too little, just right? You know, and, you know, so we are, you know, anxious to have your feedback if you have, you know, any on, on this. So I think that, I think that's it. I'll, I'll stop there. I don't want to.
A couple of comments. It's my understanding from reading through this and listening to Ben, that if we approve this, we have designated standards that we can expect a builder to comply with, like a building code. If they come into it with a project and it does not meet those standards, it's summarily rejected because it does not meet those standards. There's nothing, that's not discretionary, it's not subjective. We, you know, that's, you did not meet the building code with this, so you need to go back and meet the code. You did not meet our objective standards, so you need to go back and redesign the project. I don't see that there should be an argument there with a prospective developer. I think that's, in my opinion, that's the whole idea of us approving this is that we have everything written down with little check marks next to it. We all understand that this is the, that these are the baseline, the guidelines. And, you know, don't come, don't bother me with something that doesn't meet those.
Right.
You know, we went through all this cost and expense and trouble to do that. So I'm hoping that I'm correct in that.
And I think that was one of, Ben, wasn't that your question? Should we have design review kind of as an alternative? And I think when we were putting these together, it's like, you know, there's always a circumstance where you should deviate for some reason, or maybe it's a strange lot configuration. So I, Ben, I think that was one of your questions at the end. Should we have that fallback for design review?
Yeah, you know, I guess the, the question is, should, should all projects, even projects that comply with the objective standards, go for design review or not? And that, that's really, that's a big policy question that, that we're, we're looking for feedback on. And I guess, you know, going back to Merritt, your question before and the planning commission sort of comment, you know, I think that the planning commission, and I'm sorry, I can't see who was speaking. Yeah, I think you're right that sort of this is the expectation for how projects will be designed and the expectation is that you will comply. And if an applicant is requesting a deviation, there's actually language in the standards that says that the planning commission may approve the deviation upon finding that the project incorporates an alternative method to achieve the intent statement. You don't have to. So the planning commission could say, you know what, I don't think that your alternative method is adequate and therefore we're not, we're not allowing a deviation and your project needs to comply with all of the, all of these objective standards. And that would be totally, that would be entirely within the city's right without question.
One other comment, that is that if, if we pass this and say that design review is not required, at what point?
You got a button on your mic right? Down below, right on the base, the three button.
On the side, on the side.
It's on the stem.
Oh.
You're on relay.
If, without design review, how is it that we know that this plan being submitted meets all the requirements?
That's my question too.
I mean, it, it has to go through the planning department at some point, doesn't it? Just as a cursory review to see that it meets the objective requirements?
Yeah, so staff would do the review for objective requirements. And I suppose, Ben, what, what, you know, how could we write that up in the zoning ordinance that it would go through, you know, if it meets the objective standards, it would be, you know, I think the idea is that it would be approved without a discretionary.
I mean, in my, in my experience, you would go into a building department with a set of plans and the first thing you would do is go over to the planning department. And you would have a planner look at it and they would get back to you and let you know whether or not you have any problems. If you don't, then you take it over to building and go from there. So I'm assuming that planning will be involved early.
Staff would, staff would review those objective design standards. And if they met the objective design standards.
It wouldn't go up here.
You know, I think that's question, right? There would not be a discretionary design review that it meets the design standards and moves forward. Ben, is there, you know, would you want, give more detail? Like what would the, maybe on the process of how that would be? If, say, we have a project, they came in, they met the required design standards, what would happen next procedurally at the city?
Right. So, you know, it would be similar to kind of the way that you need to review accessory dwelling units where an applicant would come in requesting ministerial by right approval of this multi-unit project and would submit an application to the planning department. The planning department, under the permitting, streamlining act, has 30 days to review and then would make a determination at some point after having all of the necessary information that yes, the project does conform with all applicable objective standards. And then at that point, that would be memorialized in some way, you know, a letter or something like that. The applicant would be in a position to apply for a building permit.
So I guess we, you know, we could clarify that language in the ordinance, you know, I guess, how would the planning commission feel? Would we like some type of action, even if there's not discretionary at that point, to bring it back for awareness to the planning commission or to be able to approve those at a staff level?
I think at staff level, if the staff is competent and they can ascertain that all of the requirements are met, then I think the approval should go forward.
I, for one, just speaking for myself, obviously, appreciate the options laid out by you as a consultant, Ben, as well as our city manager, talking about, you know, situations we could get into. But we do have a concrete proposal before us that, as I best understand it from my knowledge, you know, receiving planning commission training at, at these conferences, as well as staff educating us in the past, that this is not only compliant with what our community would want, the city of Fortuna, I believe it's compatible with our county, as well as the initiative that we have to move forward with at the state senate and assembly level. So I think that this, for me, for one, the, the proposal we have before us tonight is, is satisfactory. But let me ask this, is our staff report complete at this point? Are we ready to move in? We kind of already have moved into questions from commission.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine. I, I think it's fine to have some back and forth. Other commissioners, please address your questions to staff or to the consultants. Thank you for your time.
I, I have a question. Before a project can be, once it's completed, it has to go through final approval from building and fire and the whole nine yards. So what's going to happen with design review?
So I think what we're proposing here is, is that if a project meets the objective design standards, it would not have to go through the design review process, but it would go through a staff level review and be approved at a planning level. And then it would go, then they could submit their building plans. So this, this.
That part I got.
Okay.
But when it's all said and done, who's going to be there to see that it was completed in the way that it was agreed to?
You know, I think that's like any other project where we have conditions of.
That's the part, part of the building permit process.
Yeah.
It still, it goes through all of the departments, not just planning, for internal review before the building permit is issued. And then as the inspections take place, if there's some special inspections that the engineering department needs to make or the fire department, they'll do that as construction goes along. And then before they receive their final inspection and the certificates of occupancy, all of the departments get a chance to go through, you know, planning checks for landscaping, building department does their sign off, engineering does, you know, drainage or, you know, whatever special fire department checks their fire suppression systems, all of those things. So it does go through, it goes through multiple layers and multiple departments.
The check for the objective design standards would really come, you know, after the, the community development director approval that it conforms with the design, objective design standards. Then when they submit a building permit, there's another opportunity for the planning department to look at that and review that those objective design standards that were included in the initial application are incorporated into the building permit.
I'm, I'm assuming then that building would, upon a final picture, they would approve the construction built to spec?
Yeah, so they, any, any project ultimately would have plans that have to have a building. This doesn't bypass the building permit process.
No, no.
Only the design, yeah.
I just, no, I don't know, Gary, if you go up here, but oftentimes there's a change made and it's, you submit a new drawing and it's an as-built, a denim to a building permit.
So if there was a change during construction, they said, hey, we want to make this roof two feet taller or two feet shorter, or we want to change this window so there, you know, there's a little more void wall space, those things would have to be tracked by the building department. There'd have to be awareness at the building department level that, hey, this could be one of those objective design standards and it could cause a conflict. So, you know, if the change conflicts with one of the objective design standards.
Yeah, any times anything changes, anything to the aesthetics of a building, planning's brought, brought into it right then. We don't, we, we don't mess with that portion of it because there's, there's more than just myself and a building inspector looking at it. It's not what the whole thing is. So if it, if it's everything inside and code and what we require, other than some things that the building department would require as life safety issues, we kind of trump a lot of those other little things. But we usually catch that in the go-round, the start before it even gets out there. So, but anything that changes, anything. that changes anything, it's going to look on that building, whatever, it goes back to planning, it goes back to engineering, it goes back to every power that needs to be, before we give the go ahead to proceed on their end of it. Or if they've already proceeded with it, we usually stop them at that point and we have that nice little discussion and it starts, it starts going around. So.
Nice.
But yeah, everything all follows down to it, even to when it gets to the end. Every one of the, every one of the departments that we have, on the fire department, down to health departments, down to anybody that needs to be, that needs to look at it, we have them all come in, they all look at it, we get everybody's blessing, they're all signed off on it before they'll get a final sign off and a C O L.
Thanks. Before we go to open comment from the public, other questions from my fellow commissioners to staff or consultants, please.
I have one more question for Ben. What is the logic, but I'm a little confused by the maximizing, or maximizing the building as being as close to the sidewalk as possible in these plans. Now, I know for myself, I want, my windows and front door as far away from the street as possible. I was wondering if this is, are we making this sort of mandatory as being one of the objective standards that they have to push the building up close to the street and they're not allowed to set it back?
Uh huh. Yeah, so that's a great question. And it's, it's only in the special character area, in the, in the special character areas where there is a requirement for the buildings to be located more up to the front property line. And so when we were looking at these, these primarily single-family neighborhoods, the existing development pattern is very much defined by the homes that are sort of within, you know, 15 feet of the front property line, for example. And so we wanted to make sure that if a new building were to go in within that neighborhood, that it would be sort of consistent with that existing development pattern. And the same for the, for the town center, for the downtown area as well. The existing design character has the buildings located closer up to the front property line. And it's also, I think, important in a more pedestrian-oriented environment to have sort of an active sort of presence with the buildings closer to the street. And so that, that requirement applies only in these special character areas. And so in other locations, there, there isn't that requirement because it may not be desirable. It's just not sort of an essential part of, of good design.
It was interesting when we were putting this together, it was kind of hard to quantify. Ben did a good job. You know, you could, you could go to some of these neighborhoods kind of like, you know, from, from 12th Street and, and, you know, what are we right here? One street over on the side of City Hall. But there's a lot of multifamily mixed in with these single family. You could see along 12th Street. There's, there's this, it's loaded and you barely notice it. Like if you're driving by, you wouldn't even know. And we really liked the way that those multifamily houses blended in with the neighborhood and there was a lot of them in there. There's some that have little courtyards and, you know, it was hard for me as a non-architect to distinguish what are some of those characteristics. And I think the team did a pretty good job of, yeah, they're closer to the road, you know, here's some of the bulking things. And, you know, that was one of the parts of this project that I don't think staff certainly couldn't have done on our own is try to identify those design characteristics. But we thought it, you know, this neighborhood is a pretty good example, just kind of to the westerly side of 12th and, and City Hall, that you really see multifamily blended in a nice way. And we thought it would be good for those other neighborhoods, too. And, you know, I expect, you know, over time where we may have more neighborhoods that are single family now and we're starting to build out a lot of the multifamily, that we might have to identify more of those only single-family neighborhoods to allow multifamily. And having these standards that would apply to that special character zone, you know, if we are going to do multifamily, more multifamily and allow it where there are single-family residences, this would be a good example of how those could blend in with those existing neighborhoods.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern. I think the downtown area, it's, it's fine to have everything up close because it's a pedestrian-oriented area, but out more in the suburb areas where you have 25-foot setback to the houses. I know if it was my neighborhood, I wouldn't want somebody coming in and putting up a whole bunch of buildings right up against the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So hopefully we can be, adapt to that.
And then if you look in the neighborhoods, these are older neighborhoods. A lot of them, you know, are built around when the mill was kind of the primary driver and they're more modest homes, but they are closer to the streets. And, you know, if we start looking around Golikson or maybe Drake Hill or something where it's different, you know, we will have the opportunity if we start designating those differently and, you know, or if, or if these did apply in an area and they didn't seem right, that might be one of the things that people want to ask for a variance of the objective design standards. If, you know, hey, this block right here, they're all set back further. That might be a good reason to give somebody an exception.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for Ben. This is Mark Seitz. You mentioned that Assembly Bill 68 talks about climate smart as part of the, the whole thing. Can you just address that a little bit and talk about how much climate smart was actually, you know, adopted in our language tonight that we're going to adopt, if we adopt it?
Yeah, there's, there's really no relationship between this concept of climate smart parcels in AB 68 and what's before you tonight. And AB 68, you know, may, may not pass, it may not pass. If it does pass, it may not be in, you know, the same form that it is now in draft form. But what, what the legislation defines as a climate smart parcel is basically a parcel that satisfies a mobility indicator. So either it's close to transit or it's close within walking distance of stores and services, or it is located in an area with a high degree of economic segregation, which is kind of an odd thing for the legislation, legislature to be including in this definition of a climate smart parcel, but it is what it is. So that's kind of how it's defined right now. And, but, but I bring that up just as an example of how the state is each year adopting new laws that require more things to be approved by right. And, and this may or may not get passed, be passed, but we're likely to see things like this in the future that require cities to rely on objective standards in different circumstances.
Thank you. I appreciate you putting that on our radar. Just to be clear, nothing in our, that's been written up for us tonight is actually going to necessarily be impacted by those proposals, correct? So we didn't change Fortuna's standards to say we want climate smart parcels or we are, I mean, none of that actually made it into, into what we're looking at tonight, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, one way of thinking about all of this is that this is to protect the city, given what the state is doing on requiring projects to be approved, certain projects to be approved by right, and requiring cities to rely on objective standards when acting on projects. It's, it's a, it's a form of protection. To be really clear, what is required for good projects and the city can be certain that that is what will happen.
Thank you. Any further questions before we open it up for public comment? I'm looking at page eight of our packet. We're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. And then you have the resolution, commissioners, on page 10 with its title there as we prepare. So it's now open for public comment. Anyone over Zoom or in person, please speak now or forever hold your peace.
We still do not have any public pending over Zoom.
Okay, we have no one over Zoom or in person, so I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
I will second that.
And we will close public comment on this at this time. We are prepared to entertain a motion for or against our resolution tonight.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution P-2023-3103, read by title, only a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna recommending that the city council adopt the multifamily design standards.
I will second that.
Great, we'll call a vote. Commissioner Bennett?
I'm for.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hallie?
Yes.
And Chairman Seitz?
Yes. Okay, our resolution passes. We will move on to Planning Commission staff communication.
I guess I just have one thing to report. I want to say that we still are working, we, we have a recruitment out for a community development director. We did have one candidate that would appear qualified and then we sought to set up an interview and we had radio silence. And so I will just commend Katie Schmidt. She's doing a really good job in going above and beyond to hold the department together and answer a lot of questions that really kind of exceed kind of an administrative level a lot of times. So she's really doing a great job there. And we have S H N helping us on a contract level. So I would just say that that we're expecting to go that way for the foreseeable future. And we'll extend the recruitment and then we'll have to decide if we're unsuccessful in our recruitment, you know, how we want to proceed. Do we want to consider other options in the department? Maybe continue with S H N. But S H N's been doing a great job. They've been very timely and given us precise comments. And so, so far, that's working pretty well. And we don't feel like we're in any kind of a dire situation other than maybe Katie's being overworked a little bit, so.
We're due paycheck.
Yeah. So that, that's really all that we have to report. And I guess one more thing, we're, we're getting close to the point, we're working with the mill site developer and the next stop for that project will be the Planning Commission. So you'll get to see some of the plans that we have the mill site and we're really anxious to provide that. We're working together in a collaborative way and we hope that, and also Plan West is working with us on that one. Vanessa's leading that project. And it's, it's moving along and I think we're, we're getting close to the point to unveil that to the public. So anyway, that's, that's something to be excited for and potentially a big change for the city.
Thank you. We appreciate our city manager as well as Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Goad, correct? Isn't that your last name? And Vanessa and Ben, consultants, thank you for this. I just wanted to announce before the commission that a former planning commissioner a year ago stepped off of our planning commission, Mr. Mike Wells. And he served on the commission years ago and then stepped back on. In those in-between years, he drove for the city of Fortuna and then he resigned a year ago to go receive treatment for cancer. And after 11 months down in the Phoenix area, he did pass away. We honor his service, not only to the city of Fortuna, but also 33 years as the director of the police academy at the College of the Redwoods. He is missed and our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and friends. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you for saying that about Commissioner Wells. And I do make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
Second that motion.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.